All right, we'll call the regular council meeting to order. Shane, if you do the roll call, please.
Mr. Fury, Mr. McDermott, Mr. Yates.
Here.
Mrs. Stoffer.
Here.
Mr. Roden.
Here.
Mr. Sorese.
Here.
Mr. Scafidi.
Here.
All right, please join Mr. Scafidi in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father, you guide and govern everything we with love and order. Look upon the Assembly of our city's leaders and fill them with the spirit of your wisdom. May they always act in accordance with your will and their decisions be for the peace and well-being of all. Amen.
Amen.
All right, next we'll do the approval of the minutes. Is there any, any concern?
No changes.
Okay, stand is written. Any words and presentations?
There are none.
Okay, how about audience participation?
Yes, first we have Michael Turle.
Good evening, Council. Michael Turle, 9930 Forest Lake Drive. I wanted to approach Council and ask if there is any kind of ordinance on the books or if there might possibly be a need, as much as anything to get Council's feelings on, if there's any concerns about a council member also being a officer of a homeowners' association. I kind of see a little conflict of interest in here in the fact that as a council person and as a homeowners' association that they can't necessarily represent the two equally or fairly. I recently had a situation where I felt personally that I was being harassed by a neighboring HOA homeowners' association because, let's say that we were supporting different political candidates at this last primary. I approached my councilperson about this and I was not received very warmly on this thing and I just don't feel that I was quite represented by my councilperson as much as I should have been, that this was being, this person was siding more with the homeowners' association than with myself. And I spoke this thing over with Mr. Maestros actually when I was in his office for a whole different event and he pretty much agreed with me that this whole case had absolutely no merit, that I was getting stuff thrown at me. So, I'm just curious if there's any ordinance on the books or if we feel that there might need to be an ordinance. There's plenty of people in any other homeowners' association that I don't feel that the council people actually need to because they're supposed to represent the people first and not necessarily in a homeowners' association. Thank you.
Any response or anything?
Is that the only one?
Mr. Maestros. Mr. Maestros, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Roden. I would like to comment, I mean, I did have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Turle regarding whether or not his property belonged in a homeowner's association. I had no conversation with him about conflict of interest and, yeah, I, I, okay. And I just want to clear that up. He had some concerns and some questions about homeowner's association and what properties did and didn't apply and I told him really that from the city's standpoint, the city doesn't govern that, it's what's on file with the county recorder's office and put it in that direction, but we didn't have a con- conversation regarding conflict of interest. The city does have a conflict of interest policy which would not, in my opinion, address. I'm not sure where the conflict would arise between a council member and a, and a city homeowners' association. Also, the ORC does have a conflict of interest provision as it relates to elected officials. Again, I would advise Mr. Turle or anyone else to take a look at those provisions. It's my opinion that it's pretty common it's to have a council member, an elected official, also sit on a homeowners' association, so I don't see where the conflict arises and I think that any time that a potential conflict does arise, the council member can recuse themselves, so that's all I had to add.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I believe that that's not uncommon here either. Over the years, we've had other people serve on homeowner's association boards.
I believe there's two council members that are councilmen and on homeowners' associations as well.
Correct. Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, Daisy Walker.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Mr. Maestros, Council and staff. I'm Daisy Walker, Environmental Commission. When I was here last couple of weeks ago, I talked about the ceremonial living garden that was to be held May 8th at 2:30 at the high school commons. Well, there was a presentation. The invitations were not sent out, that was for the high school to do, so I apologize for that because I wasn't over that part. They were working with Ms. Turingo, so there was a small but a beautiful ceremony. The students planted the tree in memory of the high school and it lasted about maybe 15 minutes, but it was a lovely ceremony. So, if you're ever in the area, in back of the cafeteria, right on the left-hand side, you'll see this beautiful flowering tree and then on the other side, you'll see all the flowers that were planted in memory of the students. So, thanks to Savarino's again and also Coleman's Greenhouse for donating the flowers. And one more thing I need to add, I was passing out the cleanup flyers last Saturday and I went to the goodwill industry to see if they had any participants for the cleanup and they stated, yes, they would like to get involved in it. And they mentioned something interesting and they wanted me to present it to Council. If you know anyone who's moving or anyone who needs boxes, the goodwill will prepare boxes for you or save boxes because they want to recycle the boxes and not throw them away. So, I thought that was a good idea. So, if you know anyone who's moving, anyone who's packing, anyone who's shipping, just go to the goodwill, their boxes are free, they're, they are flattened out, but they state that if you want them to open them up and set them up for you, give them a call a couple hours before, they'll set the boxes up for you, leave them for you in the, in the front of the building. And if you use them and if you get tired of them, you can always bring them back to the goodwill and they'll recycle it for someone else. So, at least that company is spreading the news about recycling and I was glad that I got a chance to talk to them about it. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else, Shane?
There is none.
Okay. All right, we'll move to council communication and committee reports. We'll start with Mr. Scafidi.
The, none of my committees have met, with the exception of BZA will be meeting tomorrow evening here at 6:30 and that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Yates.
Yes, none of my committees have, have met either, however, I just want to mention the Garden Club, they had a sale this past Saturday. It was a big turnout, I was, I was there. My family was helping work it a little bit, but it was just, it was a great event and great day for it, so. This Thursday, I just want to announce for the, the chamber, there's a tri-chamber event at Signature Solon. It's a business-to-business event. If you haven't attended it before, I'm not attending it every year. It's, it's, it's a great event, it's very well-tended from both businesses as well as residents. So, I would encourage you to, it's from 4:00 to 7:00 this Thursday night. Let's see, the Nature Center has a ribbon cutting on the 21st, so I think everyone's excited about that Nature Center to get open for the summer. If you haven't seen it, it's a beautiful facility that Summit County Metro Parks has built. And then lastly, I just want to thank all the residents that came out and voted on May 5th for the primary. That's all I have.
Thank you. The Environmental Commission will meet this Thursday, May 13th at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Wanted to remind everybody about May 16th, which is this Saturday, from 9:30 to 11:30 is the Second Annual Cleanup Day to Keep Twinsburg Naturally Beautiful. We'll meet at Glenn Chamberlain Park at 9:30 and then groups will be assigned in the different locations. Just to give a couple ideas, we're going to be along Ravenna Road from City Hall to Shepherd Road, Chamberlain Road from State Route 82 to Ravenna Road, both sides, Creekside Drive, Center Valley Parkway, Glenn Metal Park, and then the campus between Dodge and Chamberlain. So, there's some good locations that we can make, you know, a big, big difference in. All the residents, homeowners, associations, you know, everyone can come out, you get a free commemorative tee-shirt, a reusable tote, or tote bag, and a free picnic lunch and that's sponsored by Jason McIntyre of Techno Form Group and they're, they're actually participating and sponsoring the food. Also to talk about is on June 13th is the Free Shredding Day for all of Twinsburg residents. It's from 9:00 AM to noon at the Public Works Building and shredding signs will be posted at the end, towards, posted by the end of May. And then something that we got information on tonight that we're going to be talking about more of is the Simple Recycling Program, a collection of textiles. Kickoff date for all residents will be Tuesday, June 23rd. Prior to this event, residents will receive information regarding the items, what items they'll pick up and two bags for their textiles. So, that's an exciting new program we're going to start. Thanks, Chris, for finding it. I think it's going to be great because you always wonder what to do with the clothes, so besides you can donate them, but you know, it's always some stuff you don't want to donate if the kids are messy, so anyways, that's all my reports, so we'll move to Mr. Sorese.
Thank you. None of my committees have met, I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mrs. Stoffer.
Hey, the ARB met on May 7th. There were four items on the agenda. One of them was an addition at 3108 Killingsworth Lane and it was approved as, as noted. There was also a non-illuminated planner sign that was approved for general diecasters and that was approved as note, as noted as well. And then a third one, Twilis Treasures, a sign that was approved for downtown right at the Richner Hardener Hardware Square. So, there was a sign that was approved for Twilis Treasures and that's, that's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Roden. Good evening, everybody. I would just like to start by telling you an event I went to yesterday. I went down to Summit County and Summit County is celebrating their 175th anniversary as a county. So, one of the things that they're doing is each week they highlight one of the communities in Summit County and this week is Twinsburg Week. So, if you go to the Summit County website, you will see a proclamation that they delivered to me yesterday, gave to me on behalf of Summit County for the residents of the city of Twinsburg. And you will also see a brief history of the city of Twinsburg. I think it is such a great way for the county to celebrate and make sure that they include all of the communities in Summit County. I know that we're on the north side over here of the county and sometimes we feel like we're more Cuyahoga County than Summit County, but they do a good job, they really do, of reaching out to us and keeping us informed and including us in many of their celebrations and certainly in all of their political endeavors over at the county. This is the proclamation that I received and I'm, I'm not going to read the entire proclamation, but I would like to bring out a few highlights here. It is an encapsulated version of the history of Twinsburg and it talks about 1817, Ethan Allen being sent here to the city of Twinsburg to survey the 400 acres that his parents purchased and he decided to stay here. And then Moses and Aaron Wilcox coming here and donating the six acres of square in the center of town, for town square and to build a school and also donating $20 to change the name of the, of the city from Mills, or township at that time, to change the name from Millsville to Twinsburg. And then in 1954, the general election, voters decided to split from Twinsburg Township to create the Village of Twinsburg. In March of 1955, elections were held for the mayor and council and the city of Twinsburg was created and adopted a charter in 1957. So, that specifically is about our history here as a city. In 1955, Chrysler announced their plans to build a stamping plant. They had nearly, they had 1,300 Ohio suppliers, nearly 400 of them in Summit and Cuyahoga County. At its peak in 1969, 5,200 people were employed at the Chrysler stamping plant. It expanded to over 2.4 million square feet and as you know, it closed its doors in July of 2010 after 50, 53 years of service in our community. So, that was highlighted here. Also, our first Twins Day festival in 1976. So, I was really appreciative of the proclamation. I thought that was a wonderful thing for Summit County council members and our executive, Russ Pry, to, to produce for us a history of, of our city here and of the township. This will be available for, for you to see, it will be out in the lobby and again, you can see it on the website. So, thank you to Summit County and there will be lots of celebrations during the coming year that you'll be invited to, that we can participate in, we can participate in and be included in their celebration. As you know, our 200th year is coming up in 2017, so they're doing some of our homework for us by giving us a, a really nice version of, of some of the outstanding high points here in the city of Twinsburg. And I would like to also this evening, thank all of the candidates who ran in the primary election on May 5th. Everybody did a great job. Commend all of you for stepping out and putting yourself forward to the community to run for, for these two seats to advance to the general election and I would like to congratulate Ted Yates and Gary Sorese for advancing to the general election in November. It was a, it was a well-done primary, so thank you to all of you. And I had a great time on last Saturday, May 2nd. I was invited by the TBL to throw out the first pitch, they had opening ceremonies. I was invited by Max Walter, Paul Baird, and Brent Horvath. The color guard was there. We had a wonderful singer from the high school and my pitch wasn't too bad, I got over the plate, so I was very happy about that. But the more important part is I just really thoroughly enjoy going out there and seeing the kids, the adults, everybody enjoying what we have here in the city of Twinsburg, whether it's playing soccer or baseball or basketball or swimming. It is just wonderful to see the community activities that are going on. There's over 1,000 children in TBL, so that's an awful lot of support from parents and volunteers and coaches and our, our service department, our parks department. They did a great job. Chris, your guys did a great job preparing the fields. I know that TBL really pitches in and helps out too, so we just had a, a great time that day and I know that they'll be appreciated and well-used throughout the season. Also, on Thursday, May 7th, last Thursday, I was able to present the Mayor's Scholarship Award for Community Service and went to Caroline Baird and she will be here, Bard, I'm sorry, Carolyn Bard, and she will be here within the next couple of weeks so that you can meet her and we'll talk about all of her accomplishments. She's, she is quite an accomplished lady and she logged over 500 hours of community service time during her high school years. Next Tuesday, we were, we are going to have a meeting about Corbett's Farm and opening the roads. We're going to talk about, we're going to talk about dedication of the roads and opening at least the bottom portion over there, but hopefully both portions, the metal wood one also. So, I'll keep you posted. I, I'm pretty confident that that's going to happen, but again, that meeting will take place next Tuesday and I'll let you know when we'll, when we will be opening it and I, I am sure that it will be very soon. The one road, we, we have some other work to do on it, so we might have to close it on a temporary basis while that's going on, but nevertheless, over the course of the, of the summer, it should be opened. And I know that, that will be making a lot of people very happy down there. This came from Abby Schroll-Fecher and I would like to thank her from the Chamber of Commerce. She always keeps us updated on some of the tidbits, things that are going on in the city and I thought this was a really kind of a, a neat piece of information that she sent on to us. A little bit of news here, Nerd Wallet recently crunched the data to find that the best places to start a business in Ohio and out of 228 places that they reviewed, Twinsburg made it into the top 10%. So, if you're going to start a business in Ohio, come to Twinsburg because we will help you do that. We have a really business-friendly community here. Also from our Summit County Public Health, it's their 40th year of mosquito spraying and due to the West Nile virus, the outbreak in 1999, they have really stepped up with their surveillance of mosquitoes, the testing. Every day, they, they put out 21 strategically located mosquito traps. Those mosquitoes that they catch, they are analyzed to see if they're carrying the virus or the, if they're the Cellec species of mosquito. But anyway, just want to let you know, they've been doing this for 40 years. It's a great thing that they do for our communities to help keep down the mosquitoes and keep down disease, so that program will be starting up again very shortly here. Summit Metro Parks, the day we've been waiting for. If you go up the driveway off of Liberty Road there and you've been watching the progress of the Nature Center, it is just about complete and Thursday, May 21st is the ribbon cutting, that takes place at 11 o'clock in the morning. I know a lot of people work, but if you're not working or, or you're off that morning, Thursday, May 21st, 11 o'clock, they're, we're going to cut the ribbon. Everybody will get to see the Great Nature Center, it is pretty amazing. Even the outdoor things, everything about it is just first-class and another wonderful asset for the city of Twinsburg, another great educational tool for our teachers, for Stanley Stein, for our parks department and we're very proud of it. Our, our sincere thanks to Metro Parks for building this in our community. It's a great project. Also, our outdoor water park is opening on May 23rd, so that's not too far away. An important day to remember is May 28th, from 1:00 to 6:00. The city of Twinsburg is hosting a blood drive at the Twinsburg Community Center. This is at our multipurpose room, it's up by the senior center. Again, this is very important, we talk about this every year. Blood drive, Thursday, May 28th, 1:00 to 6:00, if you're available and you can make it. And I think I just have one more announcement. This is the first time I've ever heard of this kind of event, but it sounds pretty neat. It's called Open Streets Akron and it takes place this Saturday, May 17th, from 11 o'clock to 4 o'clock. They are closing roads in Akron and the streets will be open to bike, walk, jog, or skate or explore the community. So, if you're looking for something to do this Saturday, I think it sounds like a great family event. There's 2.8 miles of roadway that's going to be closed and it, it just sounds like fun. So, go on Open Streets Akron and you can get more information about how to enjoy the city of Akron and explore it a little bit. That's all I have for my report and now we have a guest reporter that Karen will introduce.
Good evening, everyone. I had the, I have the pleasure actually of having Twinsburg senior be a participant of the Senior Experience Symposium. This will be our fourth year in finance, participating in this wonderful opportunity for seniors who are interested in either finance or accounting and they get an opportunity to see how our department works and they get a chance to see how public funds management is, you know, the difference between private and public sector. And I'm going to have her do a report. Her name is Farrah and Farrah, you'll introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Farrah Holazata. I'm the senior who has been working in the finance department since Tuesday, May 5th. So far, I've helped out in payroll, accounts payable, and human resource and I've learned so much in just a couple of days and Mrs. House has been just a great, a great teacher and I re, I'm really enjoying what I'm doing and I'm, I'm really happy that I chose this field in the future. I think I'm going to do great. Thank you. The finance director will be attending the Senior Experience Symposium on Thursday, May 21st, 2015, at 6:30 PM, held at the Twinsburg High School. I am the senior who has been working in the finance department since Tuesday, May 5th. So far, I've helped out in payroll, accounts payable, human resource, and human resource. My last day will be Wednesday, May 20th. You didn't highlight it, so I didn't know, okay. Sorry.
You're on TV, don't worry about it.
Okay. The city income tax first monthly advance receipt distribution for May 2015 total is $1,793,356 compared to May 2014 advanced distribution of $3,258,809. This reflects a decrease of 44.97% or $1,456,452 less compared to last year. As a result of the first advanced distribution, the total year-to-date receipts collected for 2015 thus far is $8,427,921 compared to the 2014 advanced collection of $11,594,603. This is also, this also reflects a decrease of 27.31% or $3,166,142 or less compared to last year. Complete monthly distribution report for May will be presented at the next council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 26th, 2015.
Thank you, Farrah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Wasn't great news, it was great news having you there, but my figures weren't there. Thank you very much. Okay, we have, are you done?
We, the deadline is almost near for the submission of the unaudited 2014 GAAP conversion, which is being prepared by Chuni and Paniki. Once the GAAP conversion is completed, the unaudited GAAP conversion, and that is taking cash dollar amounts for the city and converting that to accrual method of reporting. Once they complete that, the deadline for the unaudited GAAP conversion is May 29th. From that point on, there'll be an interest conference set with Perry and Associates who will be conducting the official audit for the city of Twinsburg for the, for the next five years. They will complete that and the deadline for that audit report to be submitted to Dave York's office will be June, I think it's June 30th. So, just giving you an update on that and that's it.
Okay, thank you, Karen, and thank you again, Farrah, nice job.
Thank you.
Assistant Chief Ganzeski, Police Department.
Good evening. During the month of April, the city of Twinsburg Communications Center generated 2,231 calls for service between the police departments of, and fire departments of the city of Twinsburg and the village of Reminderville. The total call count for the year is 8,978 calls. The Twinsburg police officers arrested and/or cited 106 suspects in a court on 183 different counts. The arrest counts include three for assault-related charges, including one for assaulting a police officer, 23 drug-related charges, one domestic violence, 17 for driving under suspension or without a valid license, 26 for operating under the influence of alcohol and/or drug abuse charges, three open container charges, one resisting arrest, and 13 warrants were served. Remaining charges were either additional warrants or various other traffic-related charges. Twinsburg police officers issued 141 written warnings and 14 parking citations. Officers investigated 35 traffic crashes, of which seven were injury crashes, 12 were on private property and none were fatal. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Morgan, Fire.
Good evening. During the month of April, the Fire Department responded to 173 calls for service. We actually got a little bit of a chance to catch our breath in the month of April. We have a total of 821 calls for the year. That's about 15% ahead of the pace for last year. Some of the notable events, on April 5th, we did go to Mutuay to Streetsboro for an industrial fire. Our platform truck and a crew spent about two hours over there assisting with extinguishment of a fire. On April 11th, we got a call to Liberty Park for a lost teenage male. The Fire Department and the Police Department worked together for about an hour and 45 minutes to locate the drug-impaired individual with the help of location information from the cell phone provider. He was transported to hospital for treatment. And then on the 16th, we did have a fire at the FedEx site. The fire was contained to a 30-yard roll-off dumpster full of roofing straps, but it was inside the building and it was a pretty sizable fire which required the Route 82 to be closed for about 30 minutes while we had a hydrant line across the road. It also required that the, the building department requested a structural evaluation of this, of the building because of the heat that was generated. To this point, we've not gotten that report back, we're still awaiting that. In fire prevention, we completed 133 inspections and we also had 12 fire education events. We opened three fire investig- We opened three fire investigations through the course of the month and we were able to close all of them as well. On the training side of things, we had 99 different training events through the course of April. A couple of points of interest, the weather warning sirens. We had the monthly test on May 9th. All but one of them functioned properly. We're still having trouble with the one at 2110 East Aurora Road. It makes noise now, but it still doesn't turn. And we're still working to get that repaired. And finally, Explorer Post 34 at the Fire Department is going to be hosting a pancake breakfast on May 31st, between 9:00 and 2:00 o'clock at Station One. The proceeds are going to help our explorers go on a September 11th memorial trip, which will include visiting the Flight 93 Memorial in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, the National Fire Academy in Maryland, the Pentagon, one of the airports in Washington, a fire station in New York, as well as the September 11th Memorial in New York, Ellis and Liberty Islands, Grand Central Station, and finally, a Broadway show. So, we're trying to give them the flavor of the fire service on that tour. We've been blessed to have the invitation from Macedonia Explorers who set up the trip. And we hope to join them. So, if you want to join us for breakfast on May 31st, kids will be $4, adults will be $6 for pancake breakfast. That's my report for this evening.
Chief, anything about the Coca-Cola fire yesterday?
Yeah, just real quickly, it was outdoor storage. They have a lot of wooden pallets and the plastic, the crates they use for the 2-liter bottles, just stacks and stacks of those in outdoor storage that burned. The estimated value of that was about $40,000. We don't have a cause or origin at this point, but we're still investigating. So, hopefully, I'll have more information next month.
Thank you. Chris Campbell, Public Works.
Good evening, Council. The crews are completing the May branch chipping pickup. This round took us seven days to complete, which is about normal. The next round will begin on Monday, June 1st. And we always ask residents to have the branches out on that Monday. Street sweeping, we completed the first round of street sweeping. Took us a total of 18 days, probably double the amount of time it normally takes us. We collected over 74 cubic yards of material. So, it was pretty heavy, but we got that completed. The future round should be a lot easier. Fertilization, we completed fertilization of Glen Meadow Park and the amphitheater. And we've converted it over to organic fertilizer. So, we're going to use that on all the ball fields and parks. And we're pretty excited bringing that change to that program. So, that should be good for the kids and the dogs and everybody else that plays on those fields. We put our sign machine into operation. Now, this sign machine is a printer rather than the old technology was it cut out vinyl and we placed it to make stop signs and what have you. This printing machine will allow us to make banners and signs with a lot more detail and what have you. So, the guys in the sign shop, Kevin and Bobby, are taking their time learning the machine. They're doing a really great job. And actually, at Glen Meadow Park, where they're going to put the new playground set, that sign that's posted showing coming soon, they actually made that on this new machine. So, it looks pretty good. So, we're excited about that. Our bucket truck, we just put a new bucket truck into service. It was actually from last year's capital improvements. And it took 10 months to get that truck in. So, that's on the roads, doing a good job. We're preparing the old bucket truck for sale. So, that'll be available pretty soon. Grass mowing, again, as we do every spring, we try to catch up with grass cutting. It's a couple of times a week rather than once a week mowing the grass. So, we're out there. We actually ran a little bit of overtime the other day to try to catch up on everything. So, tough time of year for that program. The wastewater department's microturban had its yearly maintenance. No surprises there. The machine's running well and no big maintenance items. So, that's back in service. And the sewer maintenance crew, they're in full swing with their sanitary sewer line cleaning. We also do some storm lines as a need arises. But anytime they're doing cleaning, the maintenance cleaning, they will have signs posted in the neighborhoods to let people know they'll be in there. So, it's been a busy spring and the departments are up and running with their spring programs and doing a good job. And that is my report.
Yes, they are. Thank you, Chris. Jim Roberts.
Good evening, Council. Just a few items from the golf maintenance department. The areas from the construction last year, such as the driving range and putting green, are getting more established every day. The warmer weather that we have been experiencing in May has increased soil temperatures, resulting in a better growth rate compared to April. We are aggressively fertilizing and irrigating those areas so we can open them up this year. The contractor should be back this month to complete their punch list items from last year. I also met with our golf course architect to go over some of the Phase 2 proposals for this year. We are hoping to have all the information compiled sometime this month so we can go out to bid in June. The irrigation system has been up and running since April 27th. And so far, 1.1 million gallons have been pumped out onto the course, largely in part of the grow-in of the new playing areas. Other items that are being worked on, spring aeration was completed last week and is healing nicely. We are keeping up with mowing. As Chris mentioned, the turf is actively growing this time of the year. So, we're keeping up with that the best we can. We're also continuing with tree work and started to clean out the beds and prepare them for plantings. Lastly, the new fairway mower has been delivered and in use. The mower replaced a 19-year-old machine and was a part of this year's approved capital budget. And that concludes my report. Also, at an upcoming council meeting, we'll have maybe some pictures and an update of the project from last year just to kind of give a visual of where we're at with the driving range and putting greens. So, expect that at one of the upcoming council meetings.
That'd be great. Thank you, Jim. Any other reports this evening? I just have one last announcement. We still have a few garden plots available. Usually, this time of year, they're all spoken for, but we do have a few. So, if anybody's interested in a garden plot, call Parks and Recreation and they'll get you lined up with one. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move to legislation. Shannon, Ordinance 53, 2015.
An ordinance establishing a fixed asset policy for the city of Twinsburg.
Okay, this is now in its third reading. So, I make a motion to adopt Ordinance 53, 2015. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stauffer, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Ordinance passes 5-0. Ordinance 66, 2015.
An ordinance authorizing the lease of two vehicles through Ganley Ford Incorporated for use by the Police Department and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I make a motion to put Ordinance 66, 2015 on its third and final reading and declare emergency. May I have a second? Okay, Mr. Sorese, seconds. Any discussion? Please call the roll for the emergency.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Okay, emergency passes 5-0. Now, I need a motion to adopt 66, 2015 as an emergency.
I'll second.
Mr. Yates, seconds. Any discussion?
This is just the lease of two of the detective vehicles, so we know of that.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
All right, Ordinance 66, 2015 passes 5-0 as an emergency. Ordinance 67, 2015.
An ordinance amending salaries, wages, and employment descriptions for certain employees of the city and updating classifications of employees to be known as the 2015 salary ordinance and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to put Ordinance 67, 2015 on its third and final reading and declare emergency. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
All right, the emergency passes 5-0. Now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt our 67, 2015 as an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese, seconds. Any discussion?
Yeah, this ordinance is adding a line item to our salary orders for officers that we're hiring that are still going through training. So, this reduces the salary from our previous practices versus paying them starting salary for fully certified officers. These are, this is a reduced salary that allow them to be hired and then continue to earn income while they're going through at a reduced rate than what we've done in the past.
Anything else? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Ordinance 67, 2015 passes as an emergency, 5-0. All right, Ordinance 68, 2015.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for various special revenue accounts as established in Ordinance 24, 2015, the appropriation ordinance of the city of Twinsburg for the year 2015 and declaring an emergency.
Please make a motion to put Ordinance 68, 2015 on its third and final reading and declare an emergency. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese, seconds. Any discussion on the emergency? Please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Okay, the emergency passes 5-0. Now, I'd like to make a motion to put Ordinance 68, 2015 as an emergency. Or to pass it. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Sorese, again. Any discussion?
No.
All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
All right, Ordinance 68, 2015 passes as an emergency, 5-0. Ordinance 69, 2015.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of one branch chipper through Vermin, Vermeer Manufacturing Company for use by the Service Department and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to put Ordinance 69, 2015 on its third and final reading and declare an emergency. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Yates, seconds. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Okay, emergency passes 5-0. Now, I'd like to make a motion to pass Ordinance 69, 2015 as an emergency. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stauffer, seconds. Any discussion?
No, this is a chipper for the Service Department replaces a 1993 unit, so time to upgrade it.
All right, any other discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 69, 2015 passes as an emergency, 5-0. All right, that concludes legislation. That was an easy one for me. All right, we'll move to unfinished business, new business and miscellaneous. We'll start with Mrs. Stauffer.
I have none this evening.
Mr. Sorese?
Thank you. Just wanted to thank you, Mayor, for the congratulations and the well wishes. And I would just like to say thanks to everybody who participated in the election process, regardless of how you participated. Thank you for doing so. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. I have nothing this evening. Mr. Yates?
Yeah, just to restate what you said earlier, the cleanup day for the city is on this Saturday at 9:30. I just want to encourage all the residents to come out. It's a great event. I was there last year. We had a really good turnout for a first-year event. And just, it really helps our city. I mean, we picked up, you think we have a really clean city, but when you get to wandering around with bags, you seem to fill them up pretty quickly. So, I just, the help is always needed. It's a great event. We have sponsorship this year. And I just encourage everyone to come out. And then, also, I did attend the TBL opening day and it was just a great event. My kids have, well, I have one actually this year playing in a rec league, but it's been a few years. And it's great to see all the kids and the families get together. And the event that was put on, if you weren't there, was just a really exciting time for youth sports in Twinsburg. It really shows our community and how much we promote and encourage that kind of programming for our kids. So, it was vendors there. There was balloons that were let go. The mayor threw out the first pitch. We had live singing of the National Anthem over PA system. It was really just for, you know, for a T-ball, T-ball to, you know, 10 or 12-year-old kids. It was just, it was a super event. So, just like to thank TBL for putting that on. That's all I have.
Mr. Scafidi?
I have nothing else this evening. Thanks.
Mayor?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Maestros?
Nothing. Thank you.
Shannon?
Nothing. Thank you.
Great. All right, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Fury and Mr. McDermott. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese, second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Mrs. Stauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
All right, passes 5-0. And at that, we are adjourned. Thank you.